Coming up, a conversation with Jane Northrip Glenn, candidate for an at-large seat on Colorado Springs City Council.
This is 6035 Media.
Casting an informed vote is your right and your duty as a citizen. I'm Brian Grossman, executive editor at 6035.
And I'm Shelley Roors, spokesperson for the League of Women Voters at the Pikes Peak Region.
We're teaming up to bring you conversations with the candidates in the April 2023 Colorado Springs City election. So this interview is both an episode of the new 6035 Vote Podcast.
And the League's Making Democracy Work podcast. Let's get to it. Jane, would you get us started with your opening remarks for two minutes, please? Uh. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
My opening remarks. Well, the reason I'm running for city council, and actually Shelley, I was telling you this as we were coming down the stairs. I'm married to Darryl Glenn, who's a mayoral candidate. And for a very long period of time, I have been saying, well, you need to do this, and you need to say this, and if you win, you need to do this, and you need to do that. And I think he finally got sick of it and said, you know what? I think you actually just need to leave me alone and run for office. And I usually don't have very kind words for elected officials. And so Darryl thought it would be a good exercise for me to actually run and see how difficult it is to actually run for office and be able to speak my opinion and fend off, you know, maybe some angry thoughts or opinions towards what I'm thinking and things like that. So, so that's why I'm running. And it's been an interesting process so far, but the campaign is just now ticking up. So I am looking forward to being able to talk about things that are important to me and important to other people and see if this actually is a good fit for me to be on city council or not. But of course, the voters get to decide that.
Jane, thanks for being here. I'll get right into specific questions. My first question is regarding water and development. City council just created the 128% rule regarding annexations, flagpole annexations and developments. Can you talk to me about your feelings about the 128% rule and the city's annexation? I guess habit would be a good way to put it.
Yes. So my thoughts are, I think it's, I think it's responsible to have a 130, 150, whatever it is, percent rule, especially given the drought we've been going through. I don't, I don't know how council would arbitrarily set that. It certainly seems like when they went from 130 to 128, it was to eke in what I call another shot caller for the city. I don't think that that's appropriate. I probably would have gone higher than 130%, just to make sure that we're not annexing in areas that we can't take care of. I am not a fan of annexation at this point with the growth in the city. I think that we need, we need to have some better, I guess, measure and regulation of how quickly we're growing. And when I think about it, one of the things that may work is to just stop the subsidies and the special tax districts and the incentives, the financial incentives, things like that. I, I guess, I talk about organic growth versus contrived growth. I am not opposed to growth in any way, shape or form. I think growth is wonderful. I love when new restaurants and new shops and new homes are built in an area. But I prefer that that is an organic growth, that people who are coming here, whether they're business or residents, are coming here because they actually want to enjoy what the city has to offer, as opposed to contrived growth where the government takes money from the taxpayers and says, you know what? We want to bring this company in, and we want to bring this business in, we want to bring this builder in, we want to do those kinds of things. So that's just my overarching thought right now, that I think that if we removed those financial incentives, grants, things like that, that it would automatically slow the growth. And then we could have a, you know, take a better look at how we want to grow in the future. So.
Thank you. Shelley?
So my question also is kind of around water as well. It's kind of two-pronged. We waste a lot of water. There are big businesses, golf courses, a neighbor has Kentucky bluegrass. We waste a lot of water, 78% approximately, according to Colorado Springs Utilities. How can we do better there with regards to that? And then I think you kind of already answered this with your previous question, possibly, but should the city consider annexing water, excuse me, extending water and/or other utilities to subdivisions located outside the city that might never be annexed as part of being a regional water provider?
Right. So, and I don't, I don't know a lot about this stuff. I've never been in government before. I, I've, so I'm doing my research as I go and using what I think is common sense and just my opinion on, on things. I do not think that we should be providing water to areas that are not annexed into the city. I can't make sense of that. It seems like we have a difficult time right now taking care of what's in the city in terms of even roads and infrastructure and, and things like that. So I have a hard time thinking it's a good idea to provide resources to areas outside of the city. Now, if something is annexed into the city, we have an obligation to do that. I think right now that the, the city and utilities responsibility is to the current ratepayers, who are in effect investors in utilities and water, and that's, that's it, period. I'm not a fan of annexing any more property, any more land. I just said that. I don't, I tried to do a little research on the city becoming a partner in the regional water provider. I do not, I'm not going to pretend like I even begin to understand the pros and cons of that. I do know that nations go to war over water and land, so I know that it's a very, very important issue. I don't know enough about this issue to take an opinion, to have an opinion on that, one way or another. So.
Thank you.
I don't know if she addressed waste. Did you want to?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. The waste following, 78% of what we use is wasted on watering your lawn or watering a resort's lawn. I'm going to call out, you know, some of them on the west side, you know, there's a lot of businesses have, again, neighbors that have, that put in Kentucky bluegrass. It is not native. Why are we wasting so much water? And what would you do to possibly help that?
So I get that. I understand that. I, I don't like seeing water wasted either, especially with the water dwindling. I have to balance that with the freedom of people to make decisions on what kind of grass they want to have, how much grass they want to have, things like that. So there is a little bit of conflict that I have looking at this issue with telling people how they, what they can do with their property. Now, having said that, that's one of the reasons why I say, look, I don't think the city should grow anymore. And I know there's going to be a huge backlash. You know, there's a huge portion of this city that is all about growth and I'm not. So I'm going to be very clear and say, if you are a voter that wants this city to grow and continue to annex, I'm going to make it really easy for you to not cast a vote for me because I think, I, I just don't think we have the resources to do that right now. I prefer that the people who are already here have the freedom to make decisions with their properties, to use the water the way that they want to use it, and hopefully people would make good decisions. A lot of people don't make good decisions. I just would be cautious about making decisions for people. So I don't know that I would vote in favor of telling people how much grass they could put in their home.
So I think I know how you're going to answer this one, but also sort of a personal property right question. Where do you stand on accessory dwelling units being allowed in single-family residential areas?
So first of all, I think it's funny that you said you think you know where I stand on that.
Yeah, maybe I shouldn't have said that.
I, I was emailing somebody the other day and in my email response to this person, I said, look, one of the things I'm trying to do is to be so transparent about my position on issues that there's no confusion with people who are going to cast a vote for me or not cast a vote for me. And in doing so, that I think that people would be able to project how I would vote on an issue based on those things. And so, so I think I'm doing well if you say that you think you know what my position is on this.
I'm interested in this because you have a real estate background too.
My position is, I am gung ho accessory dwelling units. I think, again, when I look at whose job it is to make decisions for people, I'm not a fan of the government. I'm probably on the watch list. And I don't think the government should be the, I don't think the government should be the one saying you can't have accessory dwelling units on single-family property, single-family properties. Now, having said that, that's where HOAs come in, right? So I think the government's job is to optimize freedom for people. And then the HOAs can step in and say, well, not in our neighborhood, you're not going to do that. And that's fine, because then you and I have a decision if we're going to live in that neighborhood or not. And it wasn't the government that told us that we couldn't do that with our property. I'm a huge fan of ADUs. I think more and more there's, we're seeing multi-generational families live together and the need to live together and help each other. We need more options for, for people to live in the city. And so I am pro-ADU.
Just a quick follow-up on that. HOAs don't cover all of the city, so there are, you know, areas that aren't under the control. How would you respond to residents who are having issues that don't live in HOAs? They might have a neighbor who has 50 cars parked in front of the house kind of thing. What do you think the solution is there?
Well, they can start an HOA.
Okay.
Or, well, I hope they're a good salesperson. So.
Okay.
You know, it's one of those things where I shrug my shoulders and say, I'm sorry, the government's not going to make this decision. And you have, you have a right to move if you don't like living there because your neighbors are building ADUs. And I'm all about freedom for people to make decisions. And sometimes the decision is you yourself have to move because you don't like the neighborhood that you're living in.
Okay. Shelley?
Also kind of another housing question. How would you propose the city addresses are the issue with their affordable housing attainability? And, you know, it's, it's not attainable for a lot of people. We have, we have a crisis on hand, according to some in the, in the city. How would you plan to work on that issue?
So I'm probably going to give another unpopular answer to this for many. I do not believe that it's, I don't believe that it's the government's responsibility to make sure that people can afford to buy homes. So if we're talking about, so affordability, I'm assuming covers both homeownership and rental properties.
Yes, ma'am.
Right? So it's not a right that people own a home. You know, there's an argument that says, oh, well, if you own a home, then you have generational wealth to hand down to your families and things like that. So everybody needs to own a home. Well, I mean, that's, that's true to some extent. But then there's a lot of people that lost their shorts when they owned properties in the last recession of '08, '09, and they don't have any generational wealth now to hand down to their families. So it's really just a matter of, if you want to have generational wealth, there's other things you can do. I mean, you can rent and then you can invest your money in stocks. You can, you can buy land somewhere. There's other things to do. It's not all about, you know, the end-all be-all of handing down generational wealth does not lie in homeownership. Homes are very expensive. I, I'm at the point where I'm not, I don't really believe everything that's told to me about why homes are as expensive as they are. Everything's political. It's unfortunate. But again, I don't, I don't think people have a right to own a home. I owned a home in Fort Collins, several homes. I had a couple of rental properties, got divorced, had to sell the rental properties, got divorced a second time, had to short sell the home in the, in the recession. I ended up as a single mom renting for 10 years. And you know what? It was perfectly fine. It was just fine. And I think that renting gets a bad rap sometimes, but renting is a great option for people. As far as rental prices go, there's a lot more to the equation in terms of making something affordable than lowering the prices. Now, lowering the rent is of course a factor, and what I say to that is, market rate is, is not even, again, it's, it's really contrived and it's political. If you own a property, lower your rent. I mean, are you waiting for rent control? Lower your rent on your own, or don't raise the rent. If you have a good renter living there, no, there's no law that forces you to raise the rent every single year by a certain amount. So I think people need to step up, and maybe I have more faith in humanity than others. People need to step up. Don't raise the rent or keep the rent low. People don't want to, I talked to a number of people that flat out refuse to have roommates. Okay, well, if you can't afford to rent and you refuse to have a roommate, then there's other places you can live. Mobile, Alabama doesn't have very high rent, right? So again, it's, everybody needs to look at their own situation and say, if I truly want to live in Colorado Springs, what are my options? How can I do that? Can I live with somebody for a period of time and then I can sock some money away? There's, there's lots of different ways to look at it. And again, I am not, I do not believe that the government is supposed to be the problem solver for issues like this, nor have they even proven to be a problem solver. So I'd like to remove the government from the equation as much as possible anyway. Thank you.
Can I ask just a quick follow-up to that? Because you, you had said earlier that you're not fond of growth. Do you think increasing the supply, I mean, obviously there are apartments going up everywhere right now. Do you think increasing the supply, at least on the rental side, would help because rent is so high? Or are you also opposed to putting up more apartments?
Well, it doesn't matter if I'm opposed to putting up more apartments right now. I mean, we have enough apartments going up right now to, you know, for, to house a whole new city. So.
But with the influx, right, they're going to have to create more. I mean, you know, we're projected, El Paso County is supposed to be the largest county, bigger than Denver County in the next 15, 20 years, over a million people in the county, a lot of that here in the city. So what do we do with those people? Especially if you don't want to grow. So I'm not, I'm not arguing with you. I'm just interested, you know, how we, how we handle that.
Well, again, be careful. I, I don't not want to grow, right?
I think you said that.
No, I said, I want organic growth.
Okay, that's true.
I do not oppose growth in any way, shape or form. If people are paying their own way, if the builders are coming in and saying, I own this property, I own this land, and I'm going to build an apartment complex on it, have at it. That's, for me, that's what it's about. But I'm not going to give you, the government's not going to give you a dime to do it. So there's a difference with.
So you're okay with private development of apartments in the city?
I am like the freedom-loving person to try to give everybody as much freedom as they can to make their decisions. That's why, for me, to remove the government from the equation almost all the time is, for me, is the solution. So I'm not, I'm not opposed to growth.
Okay. My, my question, since that was a follow-up from hers, it's a public safety question. Colorado Springs Police Department is short. I've seen anywhere from 50 to 70 officers from its authorized strength. Crime is on the way up. Traffic crashes are up. What do we do about public safety and how do we, do we need to hire more police and how do we do it?
Right. So public, public safety is an important thing. I come out on my website, and I'm pretty, if somebody spent 30 minutes on my website, they'd know exactly. And I even posted the, the survey from 635 on my website. So I'm very, very clear about my positions on things. I think the government should fund core services, core services being public safety. We are short some police officers. Crime is going up in the city significantly. I look at this, we obviously have to hire more police officers. So the question is, how do you hire more police officers? Well, it proves to be difficult since we haven't been able to do it. So I don't know what the, the magic potion is to do that. One thing that we would have to look at is what is making it not appealing to be a police officer, right? They get, in my opinion, they, they make a pretty decent wage. They get good benefits while they're, while they're a police officer. I don't know about, I've heard retirement benefits maybe are a little bit not as good, and that's fine. We could look at that. But when you look at the overall sentiment of how people feel about police officers for years now, and this year's no different. There's a growing, you know, anti-police sentiment. And having said that, that is going to make it difficult for somebody to want to become a police officer. Because most people in their right mind are not going to waltz into a position where they're going to be constantly, you know, there, where things are going to be spoken bad things about them, and people are angry, and they're not doing their job, and everybody wants to do their job for them and tell them how to do their job. I am one of the people that thinks that removing the qualified immunity was not a good decision. And it's my understanding that Colorado was the first state to do that. And now if that's correct, then I just don't see it have, I mean, I don't, I don't see the impact of whether we have it or whether we don't have it. You still see in other states, police brutality, things like that, and they, and they do have qualified immunity. We don't now. So I, I don't, I don't know. I don't see the benefit of having done that. And one of the things I would like to do is as a city to stand up and say, look, I don't know if this makes a difference or not, but we should add to the budget. I believe we should add to the budget a line item that puts in the individual, I don't know what the insurance would, rider would be called, but that we pay for that insurance for each of the police officers so that they know that in this city, that if they are not going to be prosecuted for a criminal offense for doing their job, then we've got them covered from any civil lawsuits that may arise. I don't know. I, I don't know if that would help or not, but I would say that it would certainly make a statement that the city would come out and say, look, we've, we've got your back on that. I have no idea what happened with not covering the fire.
The firefighter.
The firefighter. Unless there's something that I am missing with, with that incident, I, it is unfathomable to me that so many city council members voted against that. I literally feel like I'm in a parallel universe when I, when I think about that. So anyway, I have done a ton of work with, with felons. And I've been in the prisons. I speak in the prisons, not so much anymore, but I used to speak in the prisons. I would contract with probation, the detention center, help put people who had been incarcerated into jobs. I had a staffing agency that specialized in people coming out of incarceration. That staffing agency was recognized by the state of Colorado, was named one of 21 gospel-driven businesses by Ministry Today. So with this particular issue, I really stand back and I look at it from both, both sides, right? I do have a lot of respect for police officers. And I do think that as a, as a community, we have to have more respect for police officers. I find it, it, it's frustrating to me when there are people getting arrested and they don't cooperate when they're getting arrested. I don't understand why somebody would not cooperate when getting arrested and just let the, the process play out. I, my son, he's in his late twenties, and several years ago, he was actually arrested for a felony. And it was just the oddest thing because even when we talked to defense attorneys, they were like, this is unprecedented. This is, we've never, ever, ever seen a case like this. So we don't even know how it's going to go. But I guess the police officers did charge him correctly. Well, my son is the nicest young man in the whole world. It was just the, this weird, weird, weird case. My son is upset with me that I came out and said that we should give qualified immunity back to police officers because he's really a proponent of, well, he's, he's really sees all this, you know, police brutality take place. And he's, he's on the side where he's like, oh, cops aren't, you know, they're not that nice, and most of them are, are not good. And I'm like, no, actually, most of them are good. So, so even in my own family, we have, we have this debate. But here's the thing, when my son got arrested, he was like the nicest kid in the world. Like, he cooperated. They ended up dropping the charges completely. The jail even gave him a refund check for the night he spent in jail. But the point I'm trying to make is, is that when you let the, the process work itself out, that's really probably the, the most effective way to determine the police officers that are not good police officers, right? Because if you have somebody who's resisting arrest, runs from the cops, and then they, you know, get a beat down to, into submission, it's, it's harder at that point to determine if that was a good cop or a bad cop. And so anyway, so this is really a contentious issue. The criminal justice system is hugely flawed. I do think we have a prison industrial complex that has destroyed millions of people's lives. But at the same time, I have great respect for police officers. And I think the city needs to show them that we've got their back for doing their job.
Okay. We are creeping up to the half hour point. So Shelley, I'll go ahead and let you ask the, the rest of the League's questions, and then we'll, we'll let her close out.
Thanks. So Jane, this is kind of more of a league issue, I guess. But what are your thoughts on moving spring municipal elections to the fall to help increase voter turnout and save the city approximately $600,000 per year?
I have no problem with this whatsoever. I don't understand why people have a problem with it.
I think because you would have to move an election.
You have to change the state charter.
Right, yeah.
Or, excuse me, the city charter, excuse me.
City charter, yeah.
Yeah. So it is kind of a, you know, there's, it's not just an easy move, but just curious if you're supportive of it or not. It sounds like you are supportive of it.
I would support that. I don't have any issue with that. I support leaving it the same. I don't, I don't have, I don't have an issue. I would hear both sides, and I don't have any issue with changing it. I think people who want to vote are capable of voting any time of the year and multiple times throughout the year, even though it's irritating and inconvenient. But, you know, if, if there's going to be greater voter turnout on one month of the year versus another month, I have no problem with that.
Thank you.
Did you have one more?
Can I, we have enough time? All right. So the other one's pretty simple too. What are your thoughts on raising city council pay to a reasonable amount, a reasonable amount to be inclusive of others who don't have the ability to do this as their only jobs, like retirees or something like that?
This is an issue, obviously, that comes up all the time. I, I'm, I'm not in favor of it. I am in favor of lowering the pay of other elected officials or removing it from them. I, I do think that people should, you know, if they're passionate about wanting to be on city council or in an elected position, they shouldn't get paid for it. But at the same time, I get it. It's, it's, it's a lot of work. Should you get paid for doing that work? I say no. Others will say yes. I think that when, as soon as we raise pay for city council members, then you get a whole nother group of people who, they just want to be elected officials and, because that's their income and that's their job. And I don't think that, that elected seats were meant to be that way in the first place. Now, having said that, does it put people who are, you know, minimum wage workers that work full-time out of the running for city council? Perhaps it does. And I don't know what, I don't know what to say about that.
Thank you.
We are just about at the end here. So Jane, would you like to take the next two minutes and close this out? Just remind us why we should vote for you?
Well, yeah, so I'm hoping to make it easy to either cast a vote for me or not cast a vote for me. I am pretty opinionated about certain things. One of the things, though, I do want to say that's really important to me with the way things are changing. Most people don't want to work for employers anymore. And by the way, this would make it, this would make it easier to run for city council, okay? There's a lot of people that have skills, trades, talents, and they don't really have a way to earn an income utilizing those without working for somebody else. So one of the things I want to take a look at as a city council member is, is there a way that we can create a community where it's easier to have, let's say, mobile businesses? And I'm just going to use a tattoo shop for an example, right? So let's say I'm a, I'm a tattoo artist. I don't want to work for somebody. I don't, I can't afford a brick and mortar, things like that. Can we take, is there a way for us to have people with trades and skills and make them mobile, right? So could I be a tattoo, a mobile tattoo artist and I park my van or whatever in Wolf Ranch, just like the food trucks, right? If you take the food trucks and you take that concept and you expand it to different trades, I would love to see a city where we have mobile nail salons. We have mobile hair salons. We have mobile tattoo, tattoo parlors, whatever tattoo, whatever you say that. Because that's a way then that people can start leveraging their skill set, working for themselves and calling the shots for themselves, right? Then, then that would also solve the city council problem, where if I have a tattoo, mobile tattoo shop, then I can determine when I'm going to work, and then I can go sit on city council and work. So that's one of the things I'm going to look at. I'm going to see, are there ordinances in place that are prohibiting people from doing that kind of stuff? Because I want to be really creative about giving people more of an opportunity to really make decisions for themselves, not be so reliant on businesses and, and the government.
Okay. Thanks, Jane. You've been watching or listening to a joint podcast effort by 6035 Media and the League of Women Voters of the Pikes Peak Region.
Be sure to follow Making Democracy Work and check out lvvpr.org for more information. regarding our candidate forums in March.
And continue to follow 6035 Vote to make sure your vote is an informed one. This podcast is produced by Dave Gardner, video directed by Nick Raven. I'm Brian Grossman, executive editor.
And I'm Shelley Rohr, spokesperson for the League of Women Voters. See you next time.
Hi, I'm Dave Gardner.
And I'm Nick Raven.
We're the podcast producers here at 6035 Media.
6035 Vote is just one of a growing family of hyper-local podcasts that we're creating.
And these are for you, someone who wants to engage fully in your community.
We've got the 6035, which is a quick, lively recap of the top news stories of the week.
It's my favorite. It's really great and often funny.
I love having you as a guest, actually.
I do too.
And then we have hot takes and streaming breaks, which is a potpourri of news and commentary about movies, gaming, TV streaming, and just so much more. It's for the youthful heart and, you know, that could be anyone, really.
Yeah. I'm surprised I even really enjoy it because Nick hosts that and he's, he's witty.
Well, and the cool thing is that you can watch both of these podcasts on YouTube.
Or you can listen to them on the go in your favorite podcast app.
And there's a couple more, but you can also visit 6035media.org/podcast to see them, browse them, sample them.
And then subscribe to the ones that you like.
And then subscribe to this YouTube channel.
Yeah. And if you really love it all, like we do, you can just, you can just subscribe to the 6035 Podcast Network podcast, which is a conglomeration of all the episodes, all the brilliance and humor that emanates from the studio.
Absolutely. And there's a lot of it. So like and subscribe today and go listen to them all or watch them.
What he said. Good. Thanks.
Got it?
That wasn't so painful.